All right, we'll go ahead and get started here. Oh gee, we got plenty of good comments tonight. All right, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order here. A city clerk, can we go ahead and call the meeting to order, please?
Here.
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 Here. Great, closed session items four point one through four point three. Looks like you might have one on four point three. Yeah, they, they, uh, they grabbed the wrong one. Okay, so it doesn't look like we have any on the, on, on those appropriate items there. Uh, city attorney?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, we're just gonna discuss the three items that are on the agenda this evening.
Very good, okay, we'll go ahead and go to, uh, closed session and now, as they say, we'll be back. All right, we'll go ahead and get started here.
Acting City Attorney, can we close out the five o'clock special meeting, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bishop, did you have something to say on this item before I give my report?
Yes, I think it was item 4.3 I recuse myself from for having a conflict of interest for having done business with that person.
I believe it was 4.2.
Oh, was it 4.2? Yeah, it was 4.3 and I believe we moved it to the second item discussed.
Yes, 4.3, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
I want to report out on the...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With regard to item 4.1, real property negotiations, the City Council unanimously accepted an appraisal and approved terms and conditions based on the appraisal for the purchase of 38580 Ninth Street East. Based on the appraisal for the purchase of three eight five eight zero Ninth Street East, there's no further reportable action at this time. With regard to item four point two, City Council, City of Palmdale versus Rodney Bruce et al. The City Council was provided an update on this matter and unanimously approved settlement terms and directed the City Attorney's Office to finalize a settlement agreement. And submit said agreement to the defendants for approval. There's no further reportable action at this time. With regard to item four point three, the Vincent Dino claim, the City Council received a report regarding the claim submitted by Vincent Dino. And provided unanimous direction to the City Attorney's Office. There's no further reportable action at this time. All members of the City Council were present and able to participate in all the matters, except for four point three, where Councilmember Bishop recused himself. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. So we're going to adjourn the regular closed meeting. We'll call to order the City Council and the. What do we got here? Successor agency regular meetings, and we'll do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of our troops. Ms. Benton Court, can you handle that for us tonight?
Sure. Everybody please rise, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Thank you. Especially want to keep in. Especially want to keep in mind the Marines and sailors that we just lost off Channel Islands with that. Okay, so one more time, then we do roll call. You might have to, this might be your last time, correct? Thank you.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Chris Chan, Vice President.
Here.
Councilmember Director Benton Court.
Here.
Councilmember Director Creo.
Here.
Councilmember Director Bishop.
Here.
Very good. Alright, so. Yeah, let me bring this with me. Yeah. Had that removed. We've got a couple of presentations here. Becky. Are you sure all these guys got you? So that's on that one. Let's, this is. This the one?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so. How many years?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years. After twenty years, you get a nice little glass plaything glued to this thing. It's very expensive. Okay, I guess it gotta be nice now. Anyways, so we all, we all had, we had, we had a few nice words for Becky. She was here when I got, when I was, when I was here on the planning commission and she became the city clerk. And she's been kind of keeping a leash on all of us ever since. I'll let the other council members chime in. I think y'all had a little something to say here, so we don't want to let her off the hook out in public, right?
Right.
Laura, you want to start?
I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for keeping us in order. And making sure that we follow all the rules and laws regarding our campaigns and our political positions. Without you, I'm going to be completely lost. So I'm going to miss you both that way and as a friend. And I appreciate everything that you've done for all of us. So thank you, and enjoy your retirement. Make the best of it.
Mr. Creo.
Same here. Thank you, Becky, for everything that you've done for residents, our city employees, and the numerous elected officials that you helped throughout the process of going through an election. I personally want to thank you for doing the best you can to keep me in line with reminding me of forms that are supposed to be filed in a timely manner. Thank you very much, and I also had the pleasure of working with you for ten years. I wish you the best, and the best is yet to come, spending time with your grandkids and your family. I wish you another twenty-one years of your new role and even more with your family. Thank you.
Mr. Law?
Well, again, it's really kind of a sweet and sorrow type of thing. I was also here in the earlier part of your career, and as I mentioned before, when Victoria Hancock, the previous city clerk, she was the one immediately before you. When she retired, it was a moment like this, and I thought at the time that. I don't know if I'm still on the council at that point, but when did you become city clerk?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
No, the city clerk?
Two thousand and two.
Yeah, so that was a year after, but nevertheless, when Victoria was leaving, I wondered, you know, how anybody could fill those shoes, and in fact, you have done so with a great deal of grace and diplomacy and yet firmness. Because you weren't going to let people get away with stuff, and, but you did it with a soft touch. And so, like the other members, I thank you for helping us along and helping me specifically. So I wish you the best, you and your husband, a wonderful retirement, and we hope to see you again around town. Thank you, Becky.
Mr. Bishop?
Oh, I just want to thank you for your many years of service and thank you for choosing Palmdale to give a, give your, you know, spend your career here. I wish you a happy retirement, and I really appreciate the hard work you put into the city councils or into the city clerk's office. You deal with the city council, you deal with the public, just as much as sometimes the mayor or the city managers or the city attorney, especially come election season. So you've done your job very well, very eloquently and very, you know, with class, and I appreciate that. And you've helped make a difficult city business possible through helping people and educate them and being transparent as a city clerk, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Murphy?
Becky, you've been great. You've been more than an employee. I really feel like you've given me great guidance. I apologize on behalf of the city because I think they undervalued you, and you are really truly amazing, and we were lucky to have you for so long. And I wish you and your family enjoyment in retirement, but please take some chance to come back and visit because you are certainly going to be missed. They're going to be hard to choose to fill, so, you know, I will not be able to look down there and ask if we're doing things the right way or anything like, you know, you just have a calm presence, you always have, and thank you for everything you've done.
I was, I was telling Becky earlier that I kind of likened her to the dead mother in our scout troops. And always keeping us in line, making sure that we're working on our merit badges and everything else. So like the rest of the council said, it's, a city clerk has got a real juggling job to do out there. But everybody in this room, I think you're the smartest one because you're getting out of here before this election season starts, so God bless you. On behalf of the entire City Council, I want to give you this fine thing to try not to break.
Yes, that would be awful.
Hold on, let me.
Is his stomach rattling?
Thank you, Becky.
Council, I stand up here tonight. Claudia's on vacation, otherwise she would have been here, but she was nominated by Marie as our Warrior Award winner. And I'm here to tell you, she's, and they call in the military like the utility knife. Doesn't matter what the job is, she's willing to stand up, whether it's driving, standing in the back of sentence vehicles, the school parades. She has just stepped up. I can tell you, when I came to interview here for the first time, she had that sign out that says director of first impressions, and I understand that that was there before. And you may be surprised to know that I had a little bit of a wait before my scheduled interview time. They were running late, close to an hour. And she filled the entire hour, made me comfortable, we had a conversation, so I really, in a small way, really feel like she played a role in relaxing me before I went into an interview, and I may be standing here by, you know, just some of the things. She's warm. So I think, you know, I don't have a copy of what Marie wrote, but it could be, we could fill two pages of everything Claudia has stepped up to do for this organization, so. Because she's on vacation, she can't be here tonight, she is watching, so thank you, Claudia, to be our award, so we can all wave to her, whatever camera's working.
JJ, if I can say something else in the interject, I want to say thank you to Claudia for doing the. She's the one that translates that, and that's just phenomenal. I think that it's a great way to reach out to the Hispanic and Spanish-speaking community. Thank you, Claudia, for what you do, and thank you for everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Great. She wrote something much better.
Alright. Do you have this one before?
No. Says he just got there, June, maybe? June nineteenth.
Do you have the storybook?
I do. Look at that.
So Coco is five years old, currently in the Palmdale Care Center. It's the longest resident having arrived as an older. Surrender on June nineteenth. She's shy, a quiet girl, and would do best in adult-only home as the only dog or with a other calm dog. Make an appointment to meet Coco or any of the other dogs and cats currently awaiting their forever home. Call the Animal Control Center at six six one five seven five two eight eight eight. And is Carrie here tonight? I carried that here. We also have a goodie bag, a Palmdale swag bag, so if you adopt a dog and you mentioned that, you know, you saw the little pitch we made here, and then bring your information over to Carrie, you'll get a goodie bag full of good stuff there, so. The, these dogs, we need to get these dogs out of that shelter, folks. We've got over a hundred percent save rate over there because of the fact that people will go in for a puppy like this, and it won't be available, but they'll fall in love with another one. And I, that's a part of the meeting I miss, is getting my face licked by these little critters, so. Alright, so go get a dog or a cat. JJ, you want to come tell us about this one? Thank you for bringing this up to us.
Sure, I'm facing the council, right, so. This is proclamation for Black Business Month. The Black Chamber of Commerce has really been involved in trying to start up, and they're going to have office space here in the downtown area. And we've been trying to work with them. They were unable to be here tonight, but we told them that we could read this proclamation. Whereas historian John William Templeton, an engineer, Frederick E. Jordan Senior founded National Black Business Month in August two thousand and four. And whereas there are two point six million black-owned businesses in the United States, black businesses account for over one hundred and thirty-eight billion in revenue each year, according to the U.S. Bureau of Census. Whereas black-owned businesses within the city of Palmdale contribute to the enrichment of our city. Whereas the United States recognizes and celebrates the month of August as National Black Business Month. Now therefore, I, not the mayor, but what it says is, Stephen Hoffbauer, Mayor, City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire City Council, they hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim August as National Black Business Month. Alright, so we will present this on behalf of the council. Let's, Mayor, if you want to take it and present it?
So, yeah, either way, if we find out when they're going to be in, just let me know, and we'll facilitate that, okay? I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention and bringing it forward for us. Very good. Okay, so I need a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances this evening? Okay, I think we're using the machine, so if you push your buttons. Second? Did you get the second? You have a motion to second? Mayor? What's that? Okay, alright, I thought that was only if we had one of our guys on the phone, so, alright, so, all in favor of the item? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we good on that, city clerk? Alright, so item number thirteen, public comments on consent calendar items fourteen point one through fourteen point seventeen and non-agenda items. Mr. Murphy, you want to handle that, please?
Yes, sir. First comment we have is Salva requests a budget from the fund granted to the city to provide assistance to families affected by the COVID nineteen for rent payment and essential utilities such as electricity, water, and SoCal gas. The next one is Mayor Hoffbauer proclaims August as Black Business Month. How many businesses being awarded contracts in just this consent calendar are black-owned? How many of these businesses have black managers? What is the ratio of minority employees to minority executives? What are these businesses doing to promote black leadership? You cannot just sit here and proclaim it Black Business Month and then turn around and award our city dollars to companies without knowing this information.
Was there some, was there some money given that I'm not aware of? There's an assertion that we're giving money to somebody here.
If you're asking me a question, I thought it said that we're awarding on the agenda tonight various contracts.
Okay.
Right? Next one, I am one of those who believe that the best sales tool is a person, not a computer. You are missing an opportunity with every business person who does not come in this city hall. An opportunity to make that person feel as if they are part of the city and cares about them. The city has ten thousand business licenses already. If the new company is so good, then pay them for the new business licenses they get. At least give me a choice. If I want to come in personally. Glenn, what was the?
They can still do that, correct?
They can.
Yeah, thank you.
So on the first, have you got more comments?
Excuse me?
Do you have any more public comments?
I do. I'm sorry. This one is on the, this is outside items on the fourteen one to fourteen seventeen, that one's outside of it. I think the other ones are all on the agenda item sixteen three.
Okay.
So the first public comment, I want to expand on that comment from Salva, but I'm wondering if I should do that at the council item request? Would this be a good time to do that? No, or should I just do it at the end?
Well, I'm not really sure what your, if comments are intended to do, but, I mean, at the end of the meeting would be great if you want to add an item or whatever this is.
My expansion on this comment has to do with the CARES Act of COVID nineteen. My, uh, expansion on this comment has to do with the, uh, CARES Act, the COVID nineteen, uh, funds that the city received. I wanted to, uh, ask the council if they would be inclined to allocate some of that money to the, uh. Rental, uh, assistance and the, uh, mortgage assistance program. I know that we talked about this before, uh, so if I can do that at the end, uh, I can do that.
I think actually there, I think we could probably answer that, they're working on it. The, they, they, they are already looking at what the rules are to be able to allocate that funds. Cause I've gotten about three or four emails this week on that item and already asked that question, so JJ, do you want to expand on that?
Yes, the, the next, eh, we started, we're, we're trying to do this in, in, uh, order, so we started with the Operation Jump Start. Then, uh, two weeks ago, we announced the ten thousand dollar small business grants, and I'm proud to announce that we had. Over, well, not necessarily proud, but. We have enough money for forty-five of those grants, we had over a hundred applications. The next program we're gonna roll out is a mortgage assistance program, and then the, the fourth one will be the rental assistance. And we have about four hundred thousand dollars set aside for those last two programs, so.
So what I wanted to ask is if there is an amount that the council would consider to provide for that program? I know that Salva is doing an event this Friday where they're gonna be handing out rental assistance to, uh, list of applicants that they received. And seeing Salva and Chirla are local, uh, organizations that are familiar with the needs of the community. And they have, uh, contacted families that are asking for this assistance. I wanted to see if we can have a discussion of how much can the city allocate to a program like that.
Have, have we narrowed down what the amounts were gonna be yet, or we're, we're still?
I believe it's two hundred, two hundred. Are they both two hundred thousand? Right, so they're both two hundred thousand for both programs. What I would, uh, say, uh, councilman, is if they can provide us a list of, um. The partners they're dealing with, we will have staff who are gonna be the professionals evaluating this. Send the information out, send the application out, so we will, uh, communicate with those people. Uh, we will take the applications like everybody else, they'll have to fill out the application, but we will over communicate.
Okay, I think we have an advantage there that you, we have people that perhaps, much like our.
Sure.
Our census program.
Mm-hmm.
We can get some field people out there that know the, know the, uh, what hoops. You have to jump through and where you have to dot the I and cross the T, and then maybe they can help facilitate that process, so.
Yeah, especially because Salva has been helping with the census efforts that we're doing, so thank you for your consideration and.
No, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Mr. Corillo, I think that's gonna be important to support these organizations.
It, it will be, uh, thank you.
Alright, so we're on, uh, item number fourteen. Consent calendar, uh, did, uh, anybody want to pull any of the items, uh, fourteen point one through fourteen point?
Um, I'm gonna pull fourteen point, uh, one zero, um, in an abundance caution for having done business with the applicant.
So you're pulling it, or you're just gonna abstain from that?
Uh, I'm gonna refuse myself.
Okay.
Fourteen point six for me.
Fourteen point six?
Thirteen, I think, thirteen.
So six and thirteen? Is that it? Okay, uh, motion for the, uh, balance of the consent calendar other than six, ten, and thirteen?
Motion for two.
Uh, motion and a second? Voice vote, vote?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Coaten Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Beth Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Correa?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, on, uh, fourteen, um, on fourteen ten, uh, can we vote on that and he just abstain? Does he have to get off the dais?
If he has a, a conflict, you should leave the room while you vote on that item.
Okay, in the secret compartment there, fourteen ten?
Motion to approve fourteen ten?
I have a motion by, uh, Mister Correa? Seconded by Mister Loa? City Clerk?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Coaten Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Beth Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Correa?
Yes.
Thank you, fourteen six.
I, I pulled it out, uh, because I was asked by a business owner. Who is concerned with the contract to, uh, outsource business license, uh, within a program. His concern is, um, that he feels that if there is no one available. To continue to do the face-to-face process, he's used to coming to the counter. To business license, then go to, uh, planning, then building and safety. So he's really concerned with having, uh, to use, to do this process, uh, on a computer. And it does make some sense to me, especially for small business owners. Um, who may, uh, feel intimidated by, uh, technology these days. Um, if you can tell us what the process is going to be, and maybe he could feel more comfortable. But that is something that I think that there is a way for us to, uh, phase out. And there may be already the, the, uh, provision that this service will continue to be a face-to-face for those that wish to do that. So if you can.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna keep, there'll still be a counter?
Right.
Leslie, is somebody who will still handle that counter, correct?
So, uh, good evening, my mayor and council members, uh, so. We're gonna have, uh, one full-time staff members always serving the customers at the counter. Irrespective of having this service or not, so that's number one. And also, uh, HDL is known for having twenty-four hour service on, online as well. And especially under the COVID nineteen situation now, providing the greater access to the customer is very important. Uh, so having that twenty-four hour service is critical. And also, um, uh, we have ten thousand, uh, business license we actually serve, uh, right now. Uh, one person cannot handle, uh, the level of volume, uh, work under current, uh, circumstances. So it's very important to have that redundancy. So we're not gonna lose any service at all. And if customer, uh, comes up to the counter and presents the cash, then we'll handle the cash. Any credit card payments, we'll handle credit card payments.
So you're also in the application itself as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will provide the service, uh, although the, you know, ultimately, we want to encourage customers to, uh, you know, uh, register online. But we will provide the service as redundancies.
And I understand that currently, uh, that, that a lot of these are handled online and that the, the. A good percentage of them are being handled electronically already, so there's not, there's not gonna be, it's gonna be relatively seamless. For the, for the customer?
Correct, so already in many cities like Lancaster, Glendora, uh, they already actually, uh, use HDL, uh, service. Uh, I don't have the number in terms of ratio, I would think it's pr- pretty close to eighty, twenty ratio, nine in ten ratio. Uh, ultimately, I think people, uh, will, uh, utilize online more frequently. Uh, but again, um, we will provide the service, we will always have that, uh, staff members, uh, providing the service.
So the steps will be, uh, will continue to be the same, the, uh, customer applicant comes to business license, pulls the application. Fills it out, then next goes to the planning counter, then next to building and safety, and then come back to business license. That is really what his concern was?
Yes, so in terms of that, uh, workflow, I, I am, uh, scheduled, I'm gonna, actually, we haven't had a schedule yet, but I'm gonna meet with. Uh, Cardine and her team to, to, uh, discuss about the workflow process. So we're not missing any steps, or we can, uh, create. Opportunity for, uh, handling all different, uh, scenarios. So we can make sure we can provide, uh, service and then this transition is seamless.
Yeah, and I understand that big corporations and even the, uh, younger generation.
Right.
Prefers to do this online, it's more effective and quicker for them.
Right.
But there's still a concern with the aging population that are not comfortable with, uh, technology. Uh, so again, that was a concern, so if that's still going to be the, the case, for those that still want to be able to have that face-to-face interaction.
Yeah, so the other side of the angle is that providing the service to greater population, more effectively, and also twenty-four seven.
And being able to focus on the ones that really need the handholding.
Right.
And we have the economic development team that's there.
Right.
That can, um, you know, continue to, uh, eh, um, handle the, uh, the, uh, the. The, 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 the cases where people are hitting a stumbling block of some kind. And be able to help, uh, handhold these guys through the process, right, true? Right.
Sure. So any questions you may have?
Yeah, this is about one million, three thousand, one, one million.
Yeah, a little over one million dollar over a five-year period?
Yes.
If we had not entered into this contract, or if we didn't approve this contract, what would that cost be over five years?
With the personnel shortage of a personnel, net incremental cost to the city would be addition, additional one and a half, uh, personnel. So that would equate to, I mean, assuming, I can't really disclose the, I mean, I guess the, the salary level, let's say. Uh, total cost to city per one person, uh, would be hundred fifty thousand dollar, let's say, five-year. You know, it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollar. So not having this contract would cost city more money. Because we simply cannot handle the level of volume, ten thousand licensed by one person. We would have to add more bodies for the whole, uh, the infrastructure we have.
And then when, when, once we get somebody.
Right.
Then you, you, then you, you, you basically own them forever with, you know, medical and. You know, all the other benefits and pension costs and stuff like that, so there's a multiplier on that one too.
Yeah.
So, um, built into this, uh, agreement is the, um. Is the.
Uh, basic premise that the city is going to recoup additional revenues because. This company is able to, uh, determine people who are not perhaps paying what they should fully pay. And then also because people that might be delinquent. That's one of the rationales for approving this contract, right?
Yes, uh, so there are two components I can explain, one, uh, that particular service is contingency based. So if there's no revenue generated, then we don't pay anything at all. So that's an important factor, we're not obligating ourselves to pay for something they did not generate, so that's number one. Uh, I guess number two is, um, the, they use, um, the. Their own data, because HDL actually, uh, provides service for a sales tax and, and property tax service. To many cities in California, virtually, majority of the California cities use HDL. So they have database, uh, to cross-check, cross-index against our business license population. So their history, their experience, uh, based on their twenty years plus experience. Uh, tells them, uh, with some level of confidence that some range of twenty percent to thirty percent additional revenue. Uh, will be generated, um.
What, what's the amount again, I'm sorry?
Twenty to, uh, twenty percent to thirty percent extra revenue, uh, generated as a result of their discovery and audit service. Uh, so we came up with the, the number that is relatively conservative in this case. So we, um, for five years, we expect eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollar total revenue to be generated. Um, even though the cost is a little more, uh, the, 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 what's not included in this factor is additional personnel. That we may end up having to hire, which will actually push us to spend more money. Beyond potential revenue that could be generated. So, uh, I, I think it's, um, imperative that we, um, we mitigate the circumstance that's coming, we see that coming. And we're not able to handle the volume, uh, of work. So, uh, important factor, uh, going back to the point, uh, earlier is that we don't pay this fee unless they generate the revenue. So we're not obligating anything, we're not gonna pay anything. We're only gonna pay to the extent they will bring in the additional revenue to us.
I get what you're saying, I know we've had this conversation in the past, that there's hundreds of businesses and.
Right.
It's hard for our staff to keep track of all of them, and so what you're saying is this, this company that we're gonna be working with.
Right.
If we vote on this tonight, we'll be more efficient, it's gonna help us bring the, uh, the past due licenses and it's gonna, you know, keep people. Uh, uh, more on top of getting their, their li- licenses renewed and, and bringing that revenue that we've been missing from, from not having.
Yes, I mean, they're so low hanging fruits out there, uh, without actually impeding our, our ability to help the business. I think they have wherewithal and means and expertise and knowledge, uh, to handle the, the collection effort. And also this, uh, discovery and audit service.
Yeah, they've got that, they've got that built in.
Yeah.
I think we see this every day, as you drive around the city.
Right.
And you see the unlicensed, uh, people working at ve- at various, uh, projects and stuff around.
Right.
Um, and they're, they're basically taking, taking, uh, food out of the mouth of the legitimately licensed.
Uh, local businesses and taking money out of the local economy by doing that. Hey, one, one example could be like, you know, some of the drugstore inside Target, like for example, or I mean, I'm just giving you an example. Some of the large companies, uh, occupying or leasing the space within a certain grocery market. You know, tho- that's one of the good example.
Like the sub leases?
Yeah, sub leases, yeah, yeah. Those are good examples of, uh, reaching out to this, uh.
Well, that's, this is also how you end up with the lowball, unlicensed haulers that are dumping all this junk in the desert. Is, is that they're not trying to cover the overhead of business licenses, nobody's looking at them. They don't have a sticker on the back of their car that, eh, has, you can trace back to a business. And that's why you have that happen, and so.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like this is gonna reduce, uh, reduce the time on some of our staff, increase efficiency and, and help. Businesses come into compliance that haven't been able to.
Definitely.
Come into it for a while, so.
Yes.
I think this is a good thing.
It's important, um, for the, um, public to understand that we enter into these large contracts. Over periods of time like this one, uh, and yet, there's a lot of thought that goes into it, a lot of analysis that you presented and along with, uh, some briefing, so. Um, it's a big undertaking, it's a lot of money, but, uh, I guess it's worth, uh, worth the effort and worth the investment.
Is that, is that a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Mister Loa, seconded by Mister Correa?
I want to thank Richard for bringing this up, because it's important that we become more efficient, or at least discuss how we can be more efficient as an organization, so thank you for letting us dig into that today. Because we do want to be a good steward of public funds, and I think we're doing just that.
We're trying, yes, sir, thank you.
City Clerk?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Coaten Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Beth Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you, fourteen thirteen, somebody have a question on that one?
I do.
Sure.
So. You gonna present something, or?
Yeah, we have a couple of pictures of the project, but it, it may or may not relate to your question, or was it like, you know, make a presentation?
Well, uh, you know, I bring it up, cause again, uh, we're talking about, uh. Well, it was presented, the report is two point nine million, two point nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And in fact, the project total is two million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Yes, there was, there wa- there was a mistake in the staff report. And it turns out that, that it's about a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ten less than what is in the staff report. And this was just a, a clerical error on the part of, of staff, so apologize for that, but that is the right number.
I'm sure it would have been caught before we actually paid out the money.
Well, it wasn't a question of being paid out or anything like that, it was simply in the tabulation of them gathering all the, all the project costs. And some of the costs were counted twice in the total, that's all it was. So there weren't, there weren't any funds that were paid out.
Okay, so the, the, um. I think that's the, I might have missed something here, but, uh. It's a Palme de Auto Mall. Southeast and southwest corner of Technology Drive and Carriage Way. And at first I got the impression that it only involved from, um, on Technology Drive from the Fourteenth Freeway to Fifth West, but apparently the paving. Went all the way from, uh, Sierra Highway to Tenth West.
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, uh, Mayor Coaten, this is, uh, about a mile and a half of roadway, all the way from Sierra Highway to Tenth Street West. And, uh, the street's eighty feet wide, if you've ever been out there, it's a, it's a wide street, it's a secondary highway. And it was completely resurfaced and, and the, uh, monumentation and landscaping was redone. Uh, you might remember there was, the landscaping was in pretty bad shape out there.
Yeah.
Um, so one, and one thing I just, I would mention, you know, when you resurface the street, you think you just grind it off and, and repay, but. There are monuments, there's monumentation out there, survey monuments, and there are also, uh, valve covers and things like that, just those two items alone is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of little things that go into a paving job that you just don't anticipate.
So, I mean, looking at it from that standpoint, I think it was six hundred and forty thousand square, uh, six hundred third, six hundred and forty thousand square feet of pavement.
Correct.
And that amounted to one million, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. And then the landscaping. And then the landscaping was five hundred and forty five thousand. Um, that involved approximately a, a block and a half of landscaping right on both sides of the street.
That was from the freeway over to Fifth Street.
What's that? I've got a, I've got a memo.
Oh, okay, I didn't get that, okay, go ahead.
All right.
So.
I'll just.
In any event, the, the landscaping, that's a lot of money for the landscaping, but, um, was this put out to bid, was this put out to local?
Yes, it was.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, granted.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna jump in here, so this has been, um, this has been a topic of discussion uh, for about nine years.
Yeah.
Okay, about nine years and nothing was happening on this. We finally get, we're able to get this thing broken loose. Um, I was in some of those discussions with the auto mall, uh, and, uh, and, uh, I know they, they had some sticker shock on it as well, but this isn't like you're just bringing your guy in from around the corner to, you know, move you along and, you know, trip some bushes.
I think our city manager has something to say.
I was just gonna go to him, thank you.
I just want to, uh, mention that, uh, Chuck and his staff, this project was bid, I mean, um, budgeted, I think at three point five million dollars. Uh, the first design that came back was over budget. We worked with the contractor and did a, a new design with staff and the contractor and now, uh, saved close over five hundred thousand dollars on this project.
You know, these, the monumentation is designed in, in conformance with the specific plan, the auto mall specific plan, the first time. And that's what, uh, the city manager was referring to. And it was just, the, the price of it was just way too high. So we actually went back, revised the specific plan to something more reasonable. You know, we couldn't take it down to just a couple of, of, you know, it still had to be nice, right? So, but we took it down to something that was more reasonable priced, still expensive, but, um, you know, it looks nice. It, you can see the, you know, it's, it's very attractive. Once the, once the landscaping comes in, I think it'll look real nice. But we did, we did value engineer this.
And, and his, and this, yeah.
At the end of the day, the idea was to also work with the auto dealerships, something that will spur up the auto center, uh, to attract more, uh, buyers, uh, so they generate sales tax. It's an investment. Uh, I know it's expensive, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money, but at the end goal is to, uh, work with the auto dealerships so that, um, they could be more attractive.
It causes the whole street to flow better. It doesn't look like it's a totally separate backside of something.
Right.
So have we gotten positive feedback from the auto dealerships, I hope?
I would defer to the city manager on that.
Not only did we get positive feedback after the project was completed, to the point earlier, we've been, uh, since this project started, Chuck's team, they were involved in the design. They signed off on the, the redesign. When we gave them the prices, they couldn't believe the prices we've, we've received. And they thought, oh, here we go again, it's gonna be promised. No, we went back next month. Mark Zubor has been incredible on this project. We've had a ton of follow up. Mike's staff is, uh, you know, Luis meets with them regularly. I think they are very pleased, all the feedback has been positive.
Good, thank you.
I think this, this project turned out very nice. Um, the, the le- the letters that light up at night, I think look very, uh, nice and clean. And it's, it is important to invest in our Trade and Commerce Center and specifically the, uh, area around the car dealers. They're one of our biggest, uh, tax sources of tax revenue. So we should be putting a little bit more of our energy in there if they're, you know, they're bringing in a lot of tax revenue for our city.
That's true.
It, it looks great, too. You can see it on the Fourteenth Freeway and, uh, when it's lit up at night and it really brings, uh, a nice vibrant instance to the auto dealers, especially since the Amazon, uh, delivery center is right down the street as well. So it's really gonna help tie that whole, uh, center together for trade and commerce and hopefully bring more investment in the future.
And as far as tie, tying things together, we would be remiss if we did not mention that we still have our, our gift card program. If you buy a car from our dealerships, that they'll get a rebate. Just wanna throw that out there.
Yeah, a little plug there. Well, I know that the, uh, auto mall has, uh, this has helped motivate the auto mall to, to, uh, um, uh, move forward with some work on the, uh, interior landscaping as well and to help make it consistent and attractive, uh, throughout. So, uh, uh, I gotta hand it, there was a bunch of those meetings with your guys and they did a really good job. Again, like what JJ said, the original design was bid out based on the original design that they came up with. And when they saw, okay, well, here, holy smoke, look at the, look at how much that is. Okay, let's look at, let's look at something realistic. And they, uh, they helped, they helped do the redesign on this thing. And, uh, uh, I think it, I, I, I think it looks really good.
Yeah.
Did they figure out something to keep those rocks from slipping, uh, on those slopes? Cause I know that, uh, is that last year when it rained, uh, a lot of that stuff just kinda slid down there. Did they figure out a way to, uh, uh, lock that in or is the landscaping an ultimate?
The landscaping will help, but, but they did also have some, uh, some anchors that should hold all that stuff in place.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was just a temporary situation.
It was bad timing with the rain, so.
Yeah, and we were delayed by the specific plan. This, I know this has taken, kinda dragged down a long time, but.
Well, it wasn't, first of all, it wasn't nine years. Once we get on this thing, it wasn't nine years. So a couple of months delay and then I know the guys found some, uh, some, uh, stuff that wasn't on, uh, a lot of your, your guys' documentation that there was stuff in the pavement there that they had to work around. The architect had to change some where the footings were gonna be.
Right, exactly.
So I do encourage the public to go out and look at it and see how pretty it is and see where your tax dollars are being spent.
Go buy a car.
Please buy a car and you get two hundred fifty dollars for, if you buy a used car, you get five hundred dollars if you buy a new, a new car, so.
Yep.
Go out, take a drive, look at the landscaping and look at the cars.
That's right.
Again, uh, Mr. Heffernan, I, you know, we have a big number on a project like this. I mean, certainly there's a lot of justification for it, it, the outcome is tremendous. But I think that especially as we enter into these uncertain times, uh, with tax revenues and expenditures, we need to keep a sharp eye on what we're doing with the taxpayers' money. It's really, really important. And, uh, again, I bring it out because it's a big chunk of money and I just wanted to have an explanation out there for the public to know. So thank you for your explanation.
Absolutely.
Well, significant portions was also covered by their own landscape maintenance district that they've been putting money into.
That's correct.
And that, that resulted, that, that number was discovered when we asked for the audit after they keep saying, what's the delay? How come we can't get something done? And, uh, we got that audit and it showed that we had money in there to offset a lot of this, so.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to reiterate what JJ said about the, about Mike and his team, Carleen and, and, uh, Luis. Big help with working with the dealers and also with revising the specific plan, so, uh, thank you for allowing me to throw that in.
Thank you.
Have a motion on fourteen thirteen then?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Corio, second by Ms. Bettencourt. Roll call please.
Mayor Chair Hothar?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Vice Chair Bola?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Beckenhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Coria?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, item number fifteen, uh, Mr. Beham, you doing this? Oh, okay, all right, I, I didn't, I didn't get the memo. Again. All right, so this is a public hearing, uh, on a density bonus agreement. That's the scope of our discussion tonight?
Yes, I'm just waiting for the presentation to pop up here.
This is your district.
Fifteen one.
This is in your district.
Thank you.
It's right here, isn't it?
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the proposed project is a request to construct four three-story residential buildings totaling thirty-one units, uh, two, of two of which the units will be reserved for very low-income households. Um, as shown here in the aerial, the site is located on eight vacant parcels on the southwest corner of Avenue Q eleven and Ninth Street East. Um, as shown in the site plan, the site contains four contemporary buildings, each containing seven to eight units. And a density bonus is an increase in the overall housing units the developer may build in exchange for including affordable housing within the project. The California State Density Bonus Law, um, offers incentives to developers to encourage development of affordable housing, which would include up to a thirty-five percent increase in density. The Density Bonus Law requires that when a project includes at least five percent very low-income units, the city must grant a twenty percent density bonus over the base density. Um, although the project qualifies for an increased density, the applicant has not requested an increased density and the, um, proposed density falls within the range specified currently by the general plan. The applicant has also not requested any concessions, but the project does benefit from reduced parking ratios as allowed through density bonus law. Um, with that, you have several options. The first would be to adopt the resolution, the second would be to continue the project, the third would be to deny the project. And that, um, option one's recommendation, the recommendation. Let me go ahead and read the title of the resolution into the record here. Sorry for the feedback on my mic, I'm just trying to figure that out. Um, it is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, uh, California, approving density bonus agreement nineteen dash zero zero two, agreement number eight dash six nine eight nine pertaining to a request to construct a thirty-one unit multiple-family residential development of which five percent of the units will be affordable on vacant land located at the southwest corner of Avenue Q eleven and Ninth Street East. And that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How many total buildings will this be?
Four.
Four buildings? Just out of curiosity, why are we not going to have one low, very low income in each building? Why just two units?
I think that's a question better answered by the applicant who's here tonight.
Okay. I'm just curious.
The question, the answer to your question depends on the type of density, uh, uh, at what level of low income we're, we're talking about. And at this point, what we're, what we're, what we've made the agreement with was five percent. But, um, that, when it comes to the ten percent agreement, it would be a four units per, for the, for the forty, uh, units.
I, I only ask because we have so many people, especially with COVID, in dire need of housing. And I think a lot of people, more now than ever, will, will actually need the very low-income housing. So I was just curious as to if we could increase it from two to four, maybe have one each building, just throwing it out there.
Uh, the, the, it's a good question, but the question comes ult- ultimately to the metrics of the deal.
Okay.
Um, one of the problems, challenges we have as a developer, yeah, is the rent rule, even the market rate. So it's very difficult to build, um, well amenitized, moderate, uh, facilities and justify the metrics with the rent rule that's coming in.
Okay.
So the reality is construction costs the same to build in Palmdale as it does in Beverly Hills. It's just a matter of, um, being able to make the metrics work.
All right.
And for me, my number one goal is to build, uh, nice apartment complex. Both on the east side and on the west side. We need it and we need to make it happen.
Thank you.
I appreciate the fact that you did, um, apply some level of, uh, affordability within these, uh, within these units, though. Yeah, you, you, there really was an obligation to do that and we appreciate that you've included that in there.
Thank you, and I think, I think it is, it is a great combination. If we can do market rate along with low income, it's much better for our town. Again, some of you know, but I've been in this town for thirty years, even longer since the eighties. I always used to live in Leno Valley. So I know the, the dynamics and the demographics of the rental market. And I think the sweet spot for our town is a combination where it's not just low income and then market rate, but it's a combination. And what we're trying to do is crack the code in terms of what, what is the, what's the code there? What can we do to make it market rate and low income mixed together and come up with a product that we can replicate over and over again? So it's not just a one-off.
We definitely appreciate, appreciate the effort of you doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think this is the idea project, uh, for the downtown area with Corson being right across the way, with the pool being freshly redone and as we try to revitalize the downtown Palmdale area. Projects like this and, and so on and so forth are, are gonna be, uh, vital for, for the low-income housing and for bringing this area back up to how, how it should be. So thank you.
Can you anticipate breaking ground on this?
My goal is, uh, at the end of this year, early next year.
Great.
That's where we are. We're already in per, uh, plan check phase and we're in the second, I think, second plan check phase.
Wasn't long enough. Anything else for the, uh, for the applicant?
I think you have no doubt feeling of if they get built.
If you build it, they will come.
Yeah.
They're already here, they're dying pretty hard.
That's what I'm counting on. Yes, yes. And you'll see us again, we're, we're, we have other projects in the works.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there very low income?
Sorry?
A very low income?
Yes, sir. Market rate, but, um, very, very affordable market rate. So there's, there's a buzz trade called affordable market rate where we're not building something that is above and beyond the going rate. So we've done market studies of the rental rates here and the, the way we've made the pro forma work is very, very conservative market, uh, rental rates. So if the going rate for a two-bedroom ap- apartment is between sixteen, around sixteen fifty on the average, and these are for older units, our performance calling for seventeen fifty rent per month.
It's a tremendous demand, as you know.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
A couple of units, uh, they're at a premium and, um, you keeping the rates moderate, that's gonna help quite a bit in that.
Exactly, exactly, and that's, that's my goal as well. So we wanna make sure it's something that as a developer, when, as a local developer, I have a stake in this town. I love this town and I wanna make something that's, everybody can be proud to live in.
This is good, I think this type of real estate prod- product is a perfect fit for that area.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
Great, any, anything else or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
My second?
A motion, a couple of seconds?
Thank you.
City clerk?
Mayor Chair Hothar?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Vice Chair Bola?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Beckenhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Coria? Councilmember Director Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. Sixteen one.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Incumbent City Attorney William Matthew DeTacy retired July seventh, two thousand twenty. City council met in closed session and agreed to have Human Resources open a recording.
And for City Attorney. Interviews were held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty and the city council agreed to offer the job to Christopher Beck. The employment agreement before the council this evening is entered into with Mr. Beck effective September first, two thousand twenty. I'm available for any questions.
Mayor and Mr. Beck?
So I'm waiting back there. Uh, we have any public comments on this item, sir?
We do not.
All right.
Mr. Beck like to come up and introduce himself?
City clerk, did you have anything additional that anybody else contacted you on?
No, I haven't, I'm nothing additional.
Okay, Mr. Beck?
Thank you very much. Honorable mayor, council members, uh, I'd like to thank you first for the vote of confidence. Uh, like I had shared, I went to Highland High School. I went to, pardon me if I may, Antelope Valley College. I studied for the bar exam out here, I received my bar exam results out here. Uh, I started my legal career in Palmdale and I'm excited to continue it in service to the people of the city. So I thank you very much and I look forward to the work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, council, any comments or motion?
I have a concern and, let's see, that's section four, subparagraph B on page six of ten of the agreement. The termination, we're about to get into an election and who knows what's gonna happen with it, but if there should be a change and then the new council decides that, uh, that they don't want, uh, Mr. Beck as a city attorney, uh, it would cost the city one point two million dollars. One point two million dollars to, uh, as a severance package, is that correct?
What page are you on, I'm sorry?
Uh, so, section four resignation, termination and severance, page six of ten of the agreement, six of ten of the report, I guess. Section B, termination by the city. So I, if I understand this correctly, he would be provided with six months of his monthly salary. Oh, how much is the monthly salary?
Seventeen, no change.
It's seventeen something.
Two hundred and five a year. So it's just six months, that's what that is?
Yes.
Page three, okay.
Six of ten.
Salary and it says right there with monthly wages, yeah, seventeen thousand.
Okay, so what, what would be the cost of severance?
Pro- it'll be fifty percent of his salary, so a little over a hun- hundred thousand, hundred two.
A hundred thousand, okay.
Right.
Okay, I was, I was basing that.
And it, it, on, on that point, uh, and we discussed it with the mayor, he, he is coming at a, at a tough time right before an election, but he also just purchased a house here. So there's kind of a obligation on both sides to enter into an agreement fairly.
Fairly, yeah, fairly, yeah.
Okay. I guess, um, well, we had a, we had a significant session with Mr. Beck at the time that, uh, we all interviewed the, the prospects, the applicants for the city attorney session, so. well, we had a, we had a significant session with Mr. Beck at the time that, uh, we all interviewed the, the prospects, the applicants for the City Attorney session, so. It's gonna take on a, a significant responsibility, especially with, um, monitoring and directing all outside legal counsel. It matters, uh, where the city or back field effective representation requires special legal counsel, so. I think we have a significant, uh, amount of money of the budget that is being directed to outside counsel on all these various lawsuits that are going on. That's gonna be a major task and, uh, if this is approved, uh, you got your job cut out for you, sir. So that's something that's really significant, that needs to be brought under control and I hope you do it, sir.
Anything else or a motion? What's that?
Wasn't there a motion already?
No.
No, a motion to approve?
Second, you have a motion? You have a second, City Clerk?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Benecourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Bishop?
Yes.
Yes.
And for the record, I appreciate you, uh, buying a house out here and investing back in our community where you grew up, I think it's really important, so thank you.
That's a, that's a cri- that's a critical issue to be part of the community.
Yeah, where you, uh, work and live, I think, uh, very important for me.
Thank you. Sixteen three, who's gonna give a report on this?
I, it's, it's the next one, so now that, that one was approved.
Oh, sixteen two, I'm sorry.
Agreement A seven zero six five between the City of Palmdale and Christopher Beck, um, was just approved. So the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPER, requires the city to approve classification and pay plans separately, not in combination with other items on the agenda, so to comply with CALPER guidelines, staff is submitting the class and pay plan for general positions for approval. And that's with the new City Attorney's salary on it.
And she, this used to be all wrapped into one thing, yeah, uh, any public comments on this item? JJ, did you get anything?
No, sir.
No, okay, alright, um, so any, um, staff recommendation as to adopt resolution CC twenty twenty dash zero eight six? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, that's the second, City Clerk?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Benecourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Richard?
Yes.
Jean Annaus.
There we go, okay, thank you. Sixteen three.
Mayor, we do have some, uh, public comment here. Want to see him to start it?
Okay, you wanna go ahead and, uh?
Good evening Mayor and members of the council.
JJ, wanna go ahead, let's, JJ, read the public comments in there.
Okay. Dear City Manager Murphy, I'm writing to ask for your support on the creation of a Human Rights Advisory Committee. As a follow-up to the city's June City Council proclamation in honor of Pride Month, Mayor Hoffbauer convened a meeting of community members to open dialogue and understand community issues faced by Palmdale's LGBTQ community. To continue the dialogue and develop actionable recommendations to the council, Mayor Hoffbauer recommends the establishment of a Human Rights Advisory Committee. I want you to know that I believe that no individual should be denied equal protection of the laws, nor shall any individual be denied the enjoyment of his or her civil or political rights or be discriminated against because of actual or perceived age, arrest record, color, disability, educational association, family status, family responsibilities, gender expression, gender identity, genetic information, height, HIV status, marital status, national origin, political beliefs, race, ethnicity, religion, sex, sexual orientation, source of income, veteran status, victim of domestic violence or stalking or weight. I believe it is your responsibility to work for just treatment for all Palmdale citizens. The City of Palmdale has the opportunity to lead and provide education and programs about human rights ordinances, other council initiatives, and/or to dis- discourage and eliminate racial tensions, prejudices and/or discrimination in our community. Please inform me of your opinion on this matter, and I believe that was a letter that was sent to all the council as well.
That was, uh, Lisa Dawson?
Okay, the next one, uh, Sky Jung. Hello, I am Sky Jung and on July twenty-second, I had the great honor of meeting with Mayor Steve Hoffbauer and a number of other members of the community for a roundtable discussion on human rights within the City of Palmdale and ways to make Palmdale a more inclusive and welcoming community. Human rights are very personal to me as I am tran- transgender and a proud member of the LGBTQ community. I'm coming to you asking for s- your support on item sixteen point three, the creation of a Human Rights Advisory Committee at tonight's council meeting. Current events within the community of Palmdale have created a new dialogue and we're, uh, tark on the topic of human rights, shedding a light on the fact that for all the good we are doing as a city, there's still more work that can be done. We still have different minority groups within our community feeling oppressed and marginalized. This is an injustice and hurts all of us, not just a select few, tearing at the fabric of our city and society, inflicting a sense of pain and hurt upon all of us within the community that we as a city must work to heal from and prevent from happening again in the future. The City of Palmdale needs to identify the problems that are leading to these feelings of oppression, injustice, inequity within the community. We need to work away to solve these problems with solutions that are realistic and truly make sense. We have a chance to correct the inequity within the city and create change that will last, have a lasting positive impact on the community. However, we need your support on item sixteen point three, the creation of a Human Rights Advisory Committee within the City of Palmdale. Your support tonight is vital if we are to be able to engage in the work needed to make Palmdale a more inclusive place to call home, thank you. There's another, uh, comment from Sky Young. Current events in Palmdale have created a new dialogue, tark on the human, the topic of human rights, shining a light on the fact that we have minority groups within our city that feel oppressed. This is an injustice that hurts all of us, not just a select few, tearing at the fabric of our city. Palmdale has a chance tonight to work toward creating a sense of inclusion in the city that has not existed before and to show the community Palmdale cares about human rights and that change is coming to Palmdale. S.J. Grande, I oppose the Mayor's absolute grandstanding and pandering. The AV has residents that were very active in the established AV Human Relations Task Force Commission. It was a joint effort by both cities to combat hate crimes in our community. Bob Forche and Andy Geist have served tirelessly on that board since its inception. The late Honorable Darian Parker was the chair and his hard work and memory deserved to live on. Reactivate the AV HRC in Parker's honor, both cities must work together again.
Alright. Seeing?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The item before you is to hold a discussion and provide direction on the creation of a Human Rights Advisory Committee. As a follow-up to the, to the city's June, uh, council meeting proclamation in honor of Pride Month and through communications with the Human Rights Campaign Foundation, Mayor Hoffbauer convened a meeting of community members to open dialogue to better understand community issues faced by Palmdale's LGBTQ community. To continue the dialogue and develop actionable recommendations to the council, Mayor Hoffbauer recommends the establishment of a Human Rights Advisory Committee. If approved by the council, staff will bring back an item at a future council meeting with an ordinance to create the committee and establish its bylaws. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, so just for, um, so, so just for clarification, this was, uh, one of the concepts we had discussed last year. With all the things that have been on our table, JJ and I got together at the end of last year, beginning of this year about some, um, uh, additional action items that, uh, we were gonna be looking at bringing forward. Um, subsequently, we had the, uh, COVID started, we ended up having, uh, uh, a number of other, uh, issues came down with the BLM, uh, protests and then the Robert Fuller stuff. So a lot of things got pushed down the last several months, this is something that should have been on the agenda a long time ago because this came up last year, uh, when we looked at the municipal equity index. And it kind of, that was the genesis of why are we, where are we missing the boat on, uh, legitimate concerns and questions, if there are any, within the community? So I had a number of, uh, discussions with people, uh, about how they kind of put committees, th- this type of committee together in, in other communities, uh, and, uh, and then subsequently, after we had the, um, uh, the, the Pride Month, it was time to, you know, as they say, painter get off the ladder here. So, uh, it's, I had the, um, uh, a proper socially distanced, uh, get together with, uh, several members of the, uh, of the various community, was very specific about making sure we found people that had resources, uh, as well as personal life experiences they were bringing to the table on the issue and, um, that's where we're at in speaking with the city manager and the city attorney. In order for this to have any real, um, uh, uh, effect and recognition, uh, within the community and within the, uh, and with places like the Human Rights Campaign Foundation, uh, you know, we, we really need to codify that and have it as a, uh, ha- have the council recognize the efforts that these people want to put into this, so we're open. JJ, do you want anything to add?
We've, we've had that conversation and, uh, you know, I, we, uh, had to redirect and, and to, uh, establish this or any new committee in the future, we gotta go through the process of naming, you know, bringing an ordinance forward, so that's the plan, to have a conversation tonight.
So, and then one of the things I wanna do is make sure that as we move through this process, that if you have people that you think can bring something to the discussion here to help, help us identify and move forward with, uh, resolving, I was, I was, we were absolutely flabbergasted, uh, when we had three pages of resources that we were able to compile that everybody at the table that was knowledgeable but still didn't, you know, other people didn't know about these things. So part of this is a matter of being able to get these res- get people to the table that bring the resources and, and, and equally as importantly, to be able to bring their life experiences to the table. And how do we, how do we move through that, so, which are, which are folks' pleasure?
I'm, I'm for anything that can help, uh, bring more people to, uh, involvement for local city government, I don't think, I don't think we have enough, um, people involved, especially those who have been disenfranchised with our community. So anything we can do to get, get more people involved in local city government, I'm all for that. I was even seeing how other cities have, uh, done a youth council, for example, so I, I think anything, anything to bring more awareness to what it is we're doing to get more people, uh, involved in our city, I, I'm on board with that.
We, we, we have in that discussion too, so.
I'd like to, um, say that if we have a Human Rights Task Force, that we have to make sure that we have subgroups because we need people in each group to identify the, the issues and concerns specific to them. So while, while we can have, um, the LGBTQ group, we also need to have the, the African-American group, the Hispanic group. We need to have subsections so that everyone who feels disenfranchised, who doesn't feel like, um, things are particularly fair, that they can bring those to the table.
We want equal representation.
Most, most importantly, what I wanna say is that this council, the first act that they did was to remove an anti-discriminatory pro- process. We had an ordinance in place that put our mayor pro tem on rotation so that everybody got a fair chance, regardless of their age, sex, gender, race, et cetera. The first act of this council was to remove that so they could pick and choose who they wanted to stand in as mayor pro tem. When we say we want to encourage people to participate, Austin, in local government, when you take away an anti-discriminatory process like that, saying we don't, we don't want anybody other than who we like to sit in a position, it lies in the face of what you guys are trying to do here tonight, I find it offensive. That you're, you wanna start a Human Rights Task Force, but yet you've had two years to put back in place a policy that did not discriminate and you've chosen for two years not to do it.
I think at, at the time, it was more of a pleasure of the council thing, um, I don't think it has anything.
And if the pleasure of the council is to not, not hire minorities or women or gays, then that was your pleasure and that should never be a policy in place.
Well, I'm gonna, I, we, we, that we're significantly, uh, deviating for what.
I'm just saying.
No, I, I know you're just saying, I just, I'm just saying that the, that the, um, that that was, that, that we were, we did, we were reverting back to a, a previous process and it was what about what was, what was good within the community because we needed to make sure that we had coverage, that we had the ability to maintain to meetings. So I, I, I would, I would not like to make this a personal issue, this is a community issue, uh.
But what I'm saying is, how do you encourage the community to participate in local government when you've got policies in place that allow discrimination?
No, no, it doesn't, it would encourage participation, if you bothered to show up, you would be able to have that. So I don't wanna get into a big debate on, on that issue, cause we're just re- rehashing, you know, old history here, so. And I'd rather not make this an acrimonious debate about, about your issue, I think we wanna look at it from a community-wide issue, so. Mr. Cream?
So I do agree with the subcommittees, the subcommittees that, um, you suggested. The committee, um, is this a discussion as to see how many members should be in the committee? Or has there been already discussions on that? And if there is gonna be a certain number of members on the committee, then if there is gonna be diversity, then each member of the committee then should head a subcommittee? Is that what your thought process is?
Well, that's exact, exact, so, so let me, let me give, let me give you a little synopsis of the, of the meeting that we had the other night. So we had a couple of African-American individuals there, we had a couple of Hispanic individuals there, uh, we had, and within that group, uh, we also had, um, uh, individuals are gay, that were lesbian, that were, uh, transgender, uh, that were straight. And in the, it, it almost sounded like a little bit of a AA meeting, hi, I'm Steve and I'm straight. So there were older people, there were younger ones in various combinations. So that core group is very interested in being able to, um, uh, because of diversity of the original core group of people that we were having this discussion with, they absolutely agreed that, that, um, the, the ability to be able to, to, to tap additional resources in the community, uh, uh, people of, um, of, of, of various, um, uh, uh, concern and things like that, to be able to bring that in. But some of these topics become extremely personal for the individuals that are there. It was difficult for some of the people that were there, as well-known as some of them may be, uh, to you, for them to kind of discuss their experiences and, and kind of their motivations here. So that, that's absolutely the intent, but I think the key is, is that, um, you know, as, as, as far as is keeping a, a group as far as a manageable number, because, uh, otherwise you end up with, you know, uh, otherwise it's a mob. But absolutely, the idea here is, is, is for, for, um, a lot of these folks have got other connections within the community and, um, have got that ability to, to do it with, with, uh, with what Ms. Benecourt was referring to here. So that was, that was a, a, a core principle of, uh, what the discussion was there. And, and the, the, the key issue on that was actionable items.
Okay.
You know, not just a, another, another, you know, report that we work on, create, create a beautifully well-formed list and then stick it on a shelf and come back and look at it next year.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes, ma'am.
On behalf of every community member that participates in our local government, I would ask please in the future to choose your words more carefully, I find it offensive that you refer to this community group and likened it to an AA meeting. Please, please be, please be careful with what you say.
That, uh, that was, uh, uh, ha- having, having a, a, attended a lot of Al-Anon meetings.
It's just not appropriate, sir.
Okay, so let's just stay focused on what the goal here is, so.
The, but with the, the point I'm trying to make, uh, we can, uh, we've got three more months to nitpick everything everybody says here.
Yeah, we do.
And, uh, and I know you will, the, I think the key here is, is that, is that. And, and I know you will. The, I think the key here is, is that, is that the point I was trying to make is, is that. Uh we had a very diverse and very committed group of people that came to the table. When we were starting to try to ask these questions. They really want to get down to the heart and to the um, to the uh. To, to, basically to the, to the core of, of uh. What, what, what are the things that we can do? What are the things we can do in our contracting policies? What are the things that I know HR has, has looked at a number of issues out there? Uh and made uh some significant strides. But the thing is, is get, making sure the community knows about it out there. People of different uh and, and, and to, to, and to your point. I was trying to illustrate that we had so many different people of different uh um. Of different types and different backgrounds that, 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 that's what, you know, what it kind of sounded like.
What kind of a timeline are we talking about on this?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What kind of a timeline are you looking at?
Well, these guys want to meet at least once a month and.
I mean, for, for us to get it established formally, what, what?
Well.
What, what kind of timeline?
We're gonna, we're gonna meet with the core group.
Okay.
But if you guys have got other people you want to send over, Richard's already, you know, when he heard about this had, had an idea. I know Austin's got some ideas and I'm sure you will as well. So I'm sure all of you, all of you might have some, some members of the community that. That, that are gonna have input and want to be, you know, part of this. I think the key is tonight is we need to provide staff the direction that we, you know, we want to provide an ordinance. To, to uh, to create the committee. And I, I think that, I think that, I think that the committee has to have. As we seen when we first started to talking about this, the original issue was, was on LGBTQ issues. Well, since then, you know, we've had uh.
It's gotta be everybody.
Different ethnic uh issues that have come up as well, which, which need to be addressed. A- a- as uh, as, as a matter of priority as well. So it's gotta, it's gotta have some flexibility because it's, it's what is an issue today. And quite frankly, if you go down kind of a list of, of what, what the issues are uh in one community. They're, they're not all the same.
Right.
With every other community, but many of them have some overlap.
So step one is to do the ordinance tonight and then give staff direction to tell us how people will apply for these positions. How we're gonna vet the people for these positions. How many from each district are we gonna select? Do they have to be Palmdale residents?
Yeah.
Blah, 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 blah.
Well, first of all, I think that we've got people, we've got people that can represent the committee that don't necessarily have to be within the city.
Okay.
And um.
Cause I know Lancaster has the outreach up there in like, it's called.
Yeah, and I, 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 uh, they've had, I've had some significant, uh, I've, I've got more emails into those guys and you want to know. Um but they, they've got some significant issues up there because of um with, with, especially with the COVID. I, I still got the, the certificate that we're still trying to connect up with, with me to deliver to those guys and it's August, okay? And periodically we go back and forth and I just don't want to slip it under the, the door, you know, it's, it's.
So if, if we, if we can think of anybody that uh would be interested in the committee, should we have them contact the city manager? Contact you?
Yeah, let me know. I, I want to get this thing going ASAP, you know? I don't want to bog it down. We want to see are these people, the people that wanna um uh. How is it just sending over just an email where I'm interested in participating, what level they want to participate?
Well, I think this is gonna take some time because I don't think we'll have a, an ordinance back by next month.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Since we don't, well, how many members was interested? What are the parameters? Are there gonna be subcommittees? I mean, all of these.
I think you gotta let the committee flesh that part out, you know?
So then again, we haven't contacted you?
I'm sorry, what?
So in, if, I think that you mentioned that if we know anybody.
And ultimately I'll end up making the appointments. I'm trying to cut through the bureaucracy on this, okay? Because there's issues that are going on that are impacting people on a daily basis here. We can go through a long protracted process here. Quite frankly, there are people that, that don't, that don't even want to participate.
So how many members are you thinking about?
Well, I think the core group right now has got about six or seven people that are in there and I think that's a good number to start with.
So who do they represent is six or seven members?
I'm sorry?
Who do they represent? Are they LGBT or they?
Yeah, well, that's the primary.
Okay.
That, where that started with. But I made a point of making sure that I brought in um African American. And Latinx members of the community as well and have also been talking to, uh I've got faith-based community. And uh they were at the table but don't want to be at the table every time, but they want to be there as a resource.
And I think a meeting once a month.
Probably, yeah, or as necessary. So that's what I'm saying. If we, if we get in and start pigeonholing stuff too much here. We're gonna get into uh, uh, we're gonna get into uh 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 a process that's gonna be.
So, so then you are, are you envisioning this group to come and do a report to the city council every now and then? When issues arise? How does the council uh become updated with the discussions?
So I think some of it, and this is, that's a great question because that was one of the things we talked about uh on, on this process. Some of these things, they're gonna bring right down to Mr. Murphy because they're gonna, they're gonna be things that he's got within his. Uh um, his area of expertise and his abilities to, to make impacts with. And with, with HR policies or contracting policies and stuff like that. So some of these things become. Uh maybe we've got a policy, but we need to massage how it's being applied and things of that nature. Uh some of this stuff becomes, I mean, look at, it gets to be so simple that if you've got a, a single stall bathroom. Uh that, that uh, that there's a, there's a lot of uh, I mean, those really should be cross-gendered.
But, okay, um, I get the idea.
So things like that.
So uh, I think our nation has been um in a movement really since the nineteen sixties to deal. With past injustices, uh racial, color, ethnic, national origin. And all of those things and uh I do believe that uh the city of Palmdale has uh. Been working to address those issues as well. Um, you know, in a, in an organic fashion, hopefully uh including more. Of uh the groups that have been identified in the civil rights movement. As part of our employment base for the city and I think uh we've made some progress there. And I think that this uh Human Rights Advisory Commission is another step in that direction, but. My only concern is that we be sure that we're inclusive of, of the traditional groups. That have been identified as protected classes under, under the Civil Rights Act. And um I, I think that it, it seems like the emphasis is a little bit limited right now. But um if we're going to be inclusive of, of all of these different groups, uh then I probably. I think it's probably a step in the right direction in addressing these issues that confront our nation and uh. And of course our city, as we've seen recently.
So I think there's uh, I think there's room here too, so that um uh. One of the areas that, that was discussed is um how various groups in, interface with. Uh for example, with the sheriff's department. And s- um some are, are, it's, it's great. Other ones feel that there's no, there's no particular. Problem, but it's more of a feeling, you know, do, do they understand me and uh.
Or perceive situation too. I mean, people perceive things different than what they are. So this could be a great opportunity to start a dialogue.
It, that's exactly.
One of the benefits I see is the resources. Um I know there are a lot of resources here. But the challenge is getting them out there.
Yeah.
So I see that as being a benefit of this group, uh to be able to provide information that's there for those that need it.
Yeah.
And be a great way to start the conversation. So I'm, I'm all in favor of it. Uh let's start the conversation and I. Is there a motion that you need or what is it that you need?
Well, we would need that, uh, a, a motion to, to create it and for the staff to bring back recommendations at the next, next council meeting.
Right. I think that um, you know, like some of the commentary and some of the things that we've experienced after the tragedy. Uh involving that young man, uh Mr. Fuller. Um, I think we have, the city has received a lot of undue. Uh unwarranted and uh inappropriate and incorrect information. Because I do think that the city has done everything it can to have an outstanding law enforcement with the sheriff's department.
Yep.
The attitude of the city as well in trying to address these issues and, and uh, and make progress in them. And I think we've, we've done that and it's been something that uh started a long time ago.
Exactly, and, 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 and again, uh our, our roundtable discussion discussed that as well. Uh they have uh uh. The, uh, the, the group loves our deputies. They, 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 they love the ability to be able to come to our city. The openness that they feel without preconditions that are being put on them, uh to be able to have events here. To be able to participate in events, uh and they want to make it better. And I think that that's the, that's really the thing that, that I think we need to strive for is, you know. Again, we've got a lot of great policies, we've got a lot of great procedures and we implement a lot of good things, but how can we do it better? And I think that's part of the thing that Captain uh w- uh works hard with, with the CAC. You know, we've proven time and time again that our deputies are doing great work out there. And, and the community will come up to you and they will tell you that, that, that our, that our folks. Uh out there, our, our boots on the ground are doing a great job and, and.
So let me ask you this, mayor. Is this something that we should limit to just Palmdale? Um or Palmdale and our surrounding county neighbors? Or should we make this a regional project and, and try to get everyone involved within the Al Valley in this? What, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I know that Lancaster's working on their thing up there. I want to be able to have that dialogue with them. But we need, as a council, we need to, we need to take the steps to move forward here. If we want to get recognition by places like the Human Rights Foundation, we need an ordinance in place. Uh you know, we've sent them the preliminary letter that said, you know, we, you know, we've had this, we've had the preliminary discussion. And we're looking for, you know, additional direction from the council here. Uh I think that uh um. Uh I think that that, that's great. I think when you take a regional approach to things, uh you know. That that's uh, that that's uh, you can't, you can't work in, in a complete isolation. But I think that we also have to take our own, we have to, we have to forge our path. I think we need to be able to take that action, so. I know that Mr. Corio had made a motion here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, would someone, someone like to second?
I will second it, please. Oh, sorry, Austin.
Okay, I saw Mr. Bishop's hand up. So uh any other, and uh so the, the motion is, is to bring back. Recommendations for, for an ordinance at the next council meeting, the next regular council meeting.
I'm just looking for some clarification from city attorney to see if we can bring back. Uh an ordinance and come back with like a bylaws at a later date because. For bylaws, you can need a little bit more information from the council.
Well, and I think that, I think we let the committee kind of flesh out those bylaws. Uh as they, as a, as a, as a committee meets, they can, they can kind of uh work on, on the bylaws for the committee, huh?
Okay, so I, I don't think that we need to do bylaws at the same time as an ordinance. Is the direction to bring back an ordinance?
Right.
And. I think it would be helpful for staff if we had a couple. Details about the committee, about how many people are gonna be on it. What the qualifications to be on it are, what the term is, what the purpose of the committee is. Um those seem to be like some questions that need to be answered to, to fully form an ordinance.
Well, I think the uh, I think the, the purpose, I think Sane has the, the language over there. I think she was kind of reading it. As far as what, what uh the, 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 the core task of the, of the group would be. Uh I, I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't want to set a minimum or a maximum number per se. Cause I think that's gonna be fluid depending on what's going on at the time. We may, we may need to bring other people in. Uh there may be people who want to rotate off. Again, I had one of our very.
Like say no more than, and then it'll be open to anything up to, to that. Because after it gets too big, it can be.
Well, because of mob, you know, it just, you know, we, we, we have one of our, our faith-based groups here. That very much wants to be involved, but they don't want to be, they, they want to be able to act as an outreach. But they can't commit because of their other commitments, uh and, and because of some philosophical issues. So they, they, they want to participate, but uh Hispanic and Black and, and, and we can have a discussion. You, you would, you would know.
So having too many members may bring implications in a quorum.
Sorry?
Having a quorum with too many members may be difficult for all of them to have a majority of the meeting.
Right.
So do they have to have a quorum to have, continue with the meeting?
They only if they have to take action, right?
And they're not voting on it.
They're only made, they're an advisory commission. They're not statutory authorities.
So that's my point. I mean, that's part of the, part of the question. If, if it's a permanent body, which it sounds like that's what we're looking to do, then. I mean, it would be subject to the Brown Act and there, there would be issues, but again. You, you know, it, it depends on what their role is. So I mean, we can fashion it so. There's a minimum number of individuals and a maximum number of individuals or we can massage it later. Um so I mean, I think we can address those issues.
Okay. All right, thanks. So look, if you guys have got a, additional ideas on this. Uh get them over to myself and to JJ and, and we'll, you know, we'll work at the city attorney's office and, and uh. And uh, uh and, and whomever else we, you know, and, and with the core committee here. To uh, to kind of figure out where else do we need to go, but I think it's.
And can you give us a list of who you already have on your quorum?
Sure, yeah.
So that we are not duplicating the effort.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend that we, we don't have council members sending ideas to other council members to then give to staff to come up with an ordinance. You, you can either send it to Sane or myself. That would be good, yeah. This might be in the details, but who's gonna be appointing the initial members?
I think the mayor already has.
Yeah, that's, that's to the.
I mean, per, per our cut, the, the mayor has the. Okay.
Yeah.
Recommend in the city council.
That's why I was saying that, that if you, if you, I, I'm not suggesting that, that, that each of these guys share them with everybody else. But I would like to get them because I, I would like to be able to bounce these off some of these other, the people on the, on the roundtable. So I think as long as you don't put the other council members on it, if you send it over to JJ and myself, I think we're okay, so. We're not, we're not violating any of the rules that way, so.
I'd be very careful about that.
Exactly, that's what I just suggested, so. So I have a motion, a second. Uh Mr. Murphy, do you have anything you want to add to that, sir?
No, I, I, I don't, if, if the attorney's recommending that. The, the names get sent to him and he works with Sane, I think. Uh then they, Sane can.
But he's not gonna make the appointments needed to Sane, so I'd like him, I'd like, I, I'd like it to come over to me and then, and then I'll go over with those guys. So I, I think that that's gonna.
I don't know that you should be having committee members picking other committee members because then you don't get a diversity of thought. I think that if you're, if you're the one responsible making the appointments, then you need to make, or, or open it up to the council to make the appointment. But I, I think that you limit.
I've also, we've also got to remember we've got these guys, just because of the nature of the issue, they have to be able to work together.
There's multiple issues and the, the issues are constantly, they're constantly gonna change and.
Yeah.
The more diversity that you have, that you bring in.
Yeah.
The more open and honest the conversation will be. So I say open the, open the diversity to everybody.
Yeah.
And, and don't let people, you know, just pigeonhole people like, well, we like them because that's their topic. So I just want to caution how these people are being selected.
Right. Okay, so city clerk?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Um Mayor Pro Tem by Chair Moa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Coria?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Bishop?
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, um item number seventeen. So uh anybody have anything in particular they want to emphasize from their uh, from their reports? I think most of them were submitted.
I just, I just want to let you know that the prison committee was dark this month, but we will be having one in August. Uh it's, it's always the last Wednesday, actually, yeah. Do you want to go next time?
Don't wear jeans, right Bishop?
It's a Zoom meeting, you can wear jeans, they won't see you.
Don't wear jeans, right?
I guess if it's a Zoom meeting, it's okay.
You can wear a.
No, to the prison committee.
Don't wear jeans, yeah, don't wear jeans.
It will be escorted out of place.
Um quickly, AV, A, AQMD, uh Mr. Bishop, do, do you have anything in particular we need to report on that?
Uh I know we, uh it's in my report, but I know we, we uh funded a couple of businesses.
Yeah, we, we had the, um, some grants for some more equipment.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, if you guys know somebody, you know, let us know. The uh business that can use. Use that um, use that grant line. Uh AVTA?
Right, I uh, I guess the, the main uh item that came out of that was the uh performance levels. So ridership is way down and uh, you know, the uh transit authority is coping with uh COVID and. Highest procedures uh in place to make sure that the, the buses are sanitized and all of the. Employees are, are protected. So the principal thing I took away from that was uh. Uh the ridership being down and the way it's being, the way it's impacting um AVTA.
Yeah, it was, uh we also did a lease for uh four additional buses for system expansions with.
Right.
With them. So I wanted to clarify something. There were some, um, there was some rumors running around that uh. That we had given away twenty million dollars of AVTA's money. And uh I've got a large binder documenting all the discussions that went on. Relative to that issue up there. Uh this. Uh, this was a, uh, um, procedural, um, disagreement between Metro and some of the small operators. And eventually it got resolved, I was on the phone with, uh, with the SCAG executive director and with the Metro director about. You know, this really has to get resolved, they found some alternative, uh, methods to make the, um, uh. So we didn't end up losing, uh, that money, um, and there's a lot of policy wonk issues that go along with this. But, uh, there were some significant misunderstandings and misstatements that were made recently out there. And, uh, so if anybody, uh, if you want the information, come to the horse's mound. So I, I've got, I've got all that documentation for you, so. Uh, never did anything ever come up for a vote, never did anything come up before, uh, any particular committees. This was staff level reviews and, uh, procedural between the Federal Transit Authority, Metro, uh, and, uh. And the operators, so. Uh, contract cities, uh, just legislative stuff, you guys. Uh, audit committee, uh, we need, uh, our audit committee public member has left, uh, has resigned. And, uh, was, she was having some difficulty attending with other issues as well before this, and I think it just all kinda came to a head. So, we have a public member out there, preferably with some, uh, bookkeeping and accounting background. If you guys know somebody, let's get them over here so we can, uh, we can get them out, get them on this. Uh, investment oversight committee, was there any, any meeting on that? Any of you guys, Laura, you're, aren't you on that one? No? Um, High Desert Corridor, uh, I think that meeting was held before the last council, before the last council meeting, wasn't it? Yeah, so, um, League of Cities, we're just dealing primarily with, uh, with legislation and such as it is and. Trying to figure out what's actually gonna move forward here. Uh, sanitation, I don't think we had a sanitation meeting, I think we have one coming up. Uh, North County Transportation, Mr. Law, did you wanna?
I, uh, yeah, Mr. Correo attended for me, I was unable to attend that.
That's right, yeah.
I wish I thanked Mr. Correo for taking that over.
So there was a couple of items, uh, that we talked about. Um. The meeting really had not major significance other than the protocol of going through the meeting. Um, I, I noticed an effort to make the meeting shorter by having some agencies under the concerned calendar. Uh, I didn't have attended one before, but I think that's something fairly new. Uh, which I think it saves time in really getting to the, uh, items that are of importance.
It's a double-edged sword though, because at the same time, you get these guys from these other agencies and that was a problem we were having before. They weren't reporting on anything.
So I'll tell you that I, I wanted to pull an item with Caltrans to know what the, uh, status is on the Highway one thirty-eight. Because, uh, the last meeting I attended, I remember that we were talking about doing the improvements on one thirty-eight, which is curb sidewalk. And ADA ramps and all of that stuff.
You were talking about the East one thirty-eight or the one up off Avenue D?
The one on East on forty-seven all the way to the fourteen. Uh, as you know, that's something that I've been talking about, uh, taking over Route one thirty-eight, but anyway. They are, uh, last I remember, they're working on doing the improvements in that section. And I, again, I almost feel like pulling that out, but I, that's something that I can always ask the, uh, CEO.
Yeah.
And then, uh, his contract got extended, one of the, uh, items. Uh, he's now going to be for another year, I believe, and there is some, uh, funding allocation that was to the county. And there's talk about having another, uh, employee to be part of the N C T C to kind of help with a special.
A lot of stuff coming down the pipe. So most of the meeting was taken up with project updates, that's what most of the agenda is on that, so. Uh, okay, uh. Recycle Water Authority?
We did have a meeting, um, one of the items was the logo, uh, for the, uh, recycle. Actually, we, they, they presented four different designs.
We just got the first proofs.
Right, so we picked two, and, uh, they're gonna come back with some, uh, variation of colors that goes with the agency's. Colors, so that's. I don't think it's been that long, maybe.
I don't think, I don't think it's been that long, it hasn't been that long since we started our whole marketing plan.
I think that was the major item.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you recall?
I don't think so, just some basic housekeeping stuff, but that was the main, uh, discussion point.
Yeah, the budget and those things.
And then, uh. I, we, I don't think we had a SCAG meeting since the last meeting has come out.
I think we had one on July second, that was before the last council meeting.
Yeah, and then, uh, at the airport tack meetings, there's a lot of discussion about what's going on with airports. Uh, that was actually today. Uh, Sister Cities, so, uh, this is one of the items I want us to close. Uh, in memory of, uh.
Lucy.
Lucy Figueroa, uh, we just had her, um, her rosary and her funeral was about two weeks ago. And, um, Lucy was a real, uh, lifeblood of that organization. And, uh, the, uh, with, with the COVID stuff, I mean, there were a lot of us sitting on chairs outside the chapel. Listening and with just a handful of people, family inside, but, uh, it was, um. Uh, it was really, it, it was rough on a lot of people, cause she was, uh, pretty well-known, so. Uh, but, um, not much else to report on that right now. And then you were saying on the prison committee, the next, next one is?
It'll be next, uh, it'll be August, this month.
So on, on SCAG, on, uh, the housing committee, there's gonna be a couple of workshops, uh, that are regarding the arena. Um, direction and guidelines and all that stuff. I believe they're gonna be in August, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, something like that.
They're having workshops almost every week.
Yeah, so.
What you wanna work on?
That's really related, so that's something that I'll, I'll keep on my own. They, uh, they already assigned the numbers, but I believe that the next step is to have him. Approve, you're, you did already, right, the, you know?
Yeah, so now, now they're going through the, uh, they'll go through the appeals process and. So there's another couple of months worth of, uh, bureaucracy that you, whoops, you gotta jump through. Uh, any other significant meetings or, uh, we just gonna turn our reports in at this point?
I did return my report, so.
Anything of interest that you wanted, uh, make the other council members aware of? Anybody?
Uh, so, I just wanted to say that, uh, we're encouraging the community to, uh, uh. Get involved, or that is to say to, uh, report to the Census Bureau and, uh, get counted. It's, uh, extremely important for the city, uh, because of the fact that the census numbers is what's going to determine. How the city is going to be receiving funds from the federal government for the next ten years. And, uh, I think we're lagging behind a little bit, although nationally apparently it's an issue as well.
So the latest report as of yesterday.
What's that?
What, latest report as of yesterday is the national average is sixty-three percent, and we're at fifty-eight percent.
Fifty-eight, so we're a little bit behind, yeah.
So that, that means somebody else is gonna get your, uh, bite.
And speaking of, if I can interject, um, I heard today that the Census made it official, they're gonna stop counting at, you know, September. Can we, uh, write a letter of support? Asking the Census Bureau and ask other jurisdictions to join us? In having that being the way it's supposed to be, and I believe it's the end of October. Because of what's going on with COVID and just getting a short amount, that is really going to affect us and everybody. Uh, is it possible and is there consensus in the council to send a letter in support to the Census Bureau?
I think that's a good idea, yes, absolutely.
Do into October.
JJ, can we get a letter together? I can sign it, we can send it to the congressman and to our, uh, state, uh, senators. And send it back to the Census Bureau.
Sorry to interrupt you, uh, Richard.
No, it was a great point.
It's, it's a good deal, and I, I think the public needs to be reminded that, um.
Our little bit here in, in Palmdale, we have a, uh, raffle, um, project going on, we get together every Monday. We do a drawing for each one of our districts, uh, during this period of time, uh, we've actually had winters. And, uh, I've had the fortune to come and meet some of, uh, the residents from my district, and I think one or two from outside of our district. When we actually present them with the, uh, uh, with a reward, which is, uh, five hundred dollars, uh. Or three hundred and fifty, I don't remember the exact amount, but it's, uh, it's an amount to the regular grocers. And so that's, uh, that's just to do the, the encouragement of, uh, of having our, our, all of our residents. And so we're working to try to get the people to participate in that. Um, I had an opportunity to meet with our crisis, uh, public relations people, I had a discussion with them. On July twenty-third, um, I must say that, um, I think for the most part. Uh, they guided our city through really a tumultuous time when we were receiving thousands of emails around the world, many of them very misdirected. And inappropriate in my opinion, and, uh, yesterday, uh, there was an article published in the Wall Street Journal. Uh, by one of our locals, Rika Fountain, who used to work for the Allo Valley Press. She came out with an excellent opinion piece in the Wall Street Journal that, that addresses that particular. Issue involving the Fowler tragedy. And, uh, I gave her, I gave Rika a call today to congratulate her for having published that, because that will get national coverage. Uh, and it brings balance to, uh, what actually happened in that very tragic situation. Um. I, uh, have gone to the food distribution at, uh, at Salva. A couple of times, it's amazing that Salva has a tremendous outreach. And, uh, it's amazing to see all of the people, uh, that are, uh, being serviced with food or served with food. And, uh, I believe the last two weeks, all of the items that they had available were actually distributed. Um, then the mental health, uh.
Remind me not to wear a tie to that.
What's that?
Remind me not to wear a tie when I come there.
Too wet. A little overdressed?
Too wet.
Remind me not to wear a tie there for that.
The Salva, me?
Yeah.
That's Salva.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
The mental health, um, virtue town hall, city manager, I congratulate you for it, thank you for bringing that back. Again, uh, I think that's related, uh, to the mental health issues that are affecting our community, particularly now with COVID. And, uh, so those are, are now coming every two weeks, we had one on, uh, July twenty-seventh, uh, participated in that. Um. Let's see, will we continue having these census reports? Um. So, anyway, um, those are some of the things I did.
Alright, so, and just, uh, and just so you know, uh, there's, I've had a couple of people that have, uh, contacted me. Uh, with, uh, different committee members that are having struggles because of, you know. The lack of human interaction and stuff like this, so, uh, I've done a number of, uh, drive-by birthday events. And, uh, it's, it's really neat to, to go by there and, uh, just kinda watch, watch the individuals. We did go in for a couple of veterans recently, and then we had some with, uh, with some kids. Alright, um, I, I'll go ahead and do this.
Real quick, I, I met with a couple, uh, business owners that own salons out here, and I think they're, uh. They're grouping together, starting to put together a small organization of them that are trying to advocate for a safe opening of like, uh, hair salons, nail salons. Uh, things like that, we, we're probably gonna hear more.
Have they talked to, uh, our economic development guys? Cause there's a program going on, but they're working right now on that.
Um, I'm not sure if they have or not, but I know that.
Call these guys, there's a pro, there's something, and it works, so.
Okay, I had a meeting with them and I know that they're, uh, they're picking up speed, and like, like I said, they're probably gonna be reaching out to us. So we'll make sure we get them in touch with our economic development department, but they are, uh, advocating strong to reopen their businesses.
I think they've got an Alfresco two or something like that, so. You wanna tell us what's going on so that we're not, uh, stepping on each other's, uh.
Toes.
Circus? Or whatever, however it goes.
Toes.
Sure, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, we are preparing, staff is currently preparing what we call Alfresco two. Call it a sequel, call it whatever you'd like, but, uh, with the recent changes to the governor and the state. Uh, the county health department orders allowing, uh, businesses such as salons and barber shops along with personal care services. Um, believe churches and, um, other religious services were also included. Um, we are preparing currently, um, for JJ to sign as the, um, emergency health. Or excuse me, emergency services director, will be signing a proclamation. Allowing these businesses to essentially open up in the, uh, parking lots, the private parking lots, much like we've done with our restaurants. And we'll be coming back, um, in front of this body, August eighteenth, at the mid-month meeting. With a resolution ratifying that and allowing, um, you know, I'll be presenting that and allowing you guys. You know, any comments or input you'd like as well.
Are they allowing them right now, or does the ordinance, uh, I mean, does the county rule? I, it's so hard, I mean, like, every single day, we've got one or two of these. These, uh, uh, these, um, updates at the, uh, sometimes three of them a day that we're getting. Uh, and it's so hard to keep track of, you know, it's like, you know, it's like the pigeon playing chess.
I, I will, and I can say I've spent a considerable amount of time clicking on the websites and getting those updates daily, so we are at the first to know. Um, but this is, they are allowing them to open, we're just, again, providing them the mechanism in which to do so as part of our Palmdale Cares initiative. Um, really trying to reach out and do the best we can for our small businesses. Staff just had a meeting today with the L A County Fire and really working together as a team and an organization to go out and support and help these businesses. To achieve, you know, what I think we all want, um, is for them to stay open, continuing to hire, continuing to provide jobs and services. To our, our city and our residents.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
Okay, that's gonna be part of the ongoing discussion, I think, as we get into this, cause I know some of these businesses have discussed to me that. Our weather conditions out here are a little extreme sometimes, so. Doing, doing, doing your job, or, you know, doing some of the stuff in a hundred-degree weather is becoming a little difficult, so.
Especially, especially if, if we're having tacos in a tent next door, huh, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, um, anything else or any other items that we wanna bring back next month?
Mayor, I have, uh, something to.
Sir?
On, uh, August nineteenth, uh, C D F W is gonna have a hearing on the Joshua trees. So, we're gonna have staff call in, if any of you are eligible, truck you to the time.
We, we, we sent them that letter, right?
We did, but, you know, th- this is when they're gonna make a decision, so if we want any outreach out there, I think that's the time to do it. Ten, ten A M.
So, ex- explain that for the benefit of the people at home about what the issue is.
Carleen, would you mind standing up and?
There you go, delegate. Strong work.
Sure, good evening, um, yes, so on the nineteenth, uh, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, their commission. Is actually gonna be taking action to potentially list Joshua trees, um, as a threatened or endangered species. There, after that decision, there's basically a calendar year where the agency goes and looks further into the status. Before it actually officially gets listed, so they're making a decision whether or not they wanna enter into that year of discovery. You treat the species the same throughout this year, so. We did send a letter.
And the impact is, basically shuts down the high desert from here to the state line with the development.
You require a permit to remove a tree or relocate it, basically, is through the state.
So what do you think it's gonna do to our current Joshua tree ordinance, since we're developers, start required to save two trees per acre? Wha- what is gonna be the implication of that?
We would have to coordinate with the new regulations with the state, there would be a new permit that, uh, would be required on developers. To take action to touch those trees.
And they're aware of what the ordinance we already have, right? Cause I, I think that the city has been a good steward of, of our Joshua trees, and we've tried our best to protect them without impeding our development. Uh, as much as possible, so I hope that they see that we've made effort for years to protect those trees, and I hope that they take that into consideration.
Definitely be included in the public comment.
Leading spokesman against this, uh, item has been, uh, Robert Lovinggood out there and, uh. Supervisor Lovinggood from, uh, uh, San Bernardino, and his, he, he was very eloquent in describing the fact. You know, that communities have got protective ordinances, we've all looked at each other's to, to, uh, to have the offsets. And the preservation of, uh, and ours goes beyond, um, Joshua trees, it's native vegetation. So I remember working on that ordinance, uh, and, uh, with, when you, when you go up to some of the communities in the high desert, there's. There's significant areas of, uh, large, uh, areas of trees that are, that are in, already in protected areas.
I, just along those lines, I'd like to provide, uh, provide a little bit of context, we were in touch with, uh, C D F W. On the Amargosa Creek project, and they, we were telling them about the, some of the forests that we've created. From moving trees to certain locations, and they said, we don't, we don't consider any moved tree as a saved tree. And, you know, like, they just don't even think that they're live, and I provided them information from our, our team, our city. Uh, um, you know, the tree, uh, Mark Ethererton and the guys that are, are arborists. That shows that the city has transplanted.
that shows that the city has transplanted, and ninety-nine percent of the trees that we transplant survive.
If it's done right.
If it's done right, and she was, she was frankly shocked at the information that we gave.
That, the, and that's the problem, that I think that we face, is the, is the precon- preconceptions that many of these, uh, state commissioners have, because they don't, they don't function like, like our commissions and stuff do, where there's, um, a, a, a close level of review and, and, uh, and, and readily accessible me- uh, mechanism for, uh, um, appeal, you know? Okay. Alright, so can you make sure that you, uh, shoot something out on that reminder to us? Uh, so that we're all, we all know, and may, maybe, uh, Sane, can you put that on our calendars as an FYI that, that a hearing is going on and what the contact format is for that?
Mayor, I think it's appropriate to, uh, let the council know, if you don't know, uh, your chief of staff tonight wanted to present that item, and it's our anniversary.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Why aren't you out of here? Thank you, thank you very much for, uh, for being here this evening. I know that, uh, I know you were a little stressed today, so, I appreciate that. I really do. I know you work hard. JJ, anything else? Okay, anything else?
There's, uh, there's one more thing I, uh, I talked to Maria about, I wanted to open up the discussion of possibly putting a ban on cashless businesses. I know it's become, uh, kind of a hot, uh, button issue lately. Uh, businesses that are putting a ban are not accepting cash, so I wanted to see if we could take a closer look at that.
Is that something we can regulate?
I'm not.
I, I, is it even legal? I don't know, I mean, since when does American money not be accepted, so? Well, I'll have to look into this, I agree, let's look into it.
Yeah, they're still accepting, it's, uh, they're not accepting paper money.
Oh, they're, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, so what, you have to use your credit card, or?
Yeah.
Or your.
Turn our city attorney on us.
Cell phone?
Sure, I, I am aware that there are some cities across the country that have gone down that path. Um, I'm not aware of any of them that have been challenged. Uh, I do know that San Francisco has, has an ordinance that's similar to that, so it's something that our department can look into and bring back, you know, some information on that.
I, I would think in today's, um, s- situation where we have so many businesses out of, going out of business, that they would take any kind of payment that was available, really, so, um, is this a problem that you're seeing, that you've heard of?
I've seen some of the grocery stores, um, you know, and for various reasons, maybe they didn't have the change or whatever, but I've seen some businesses, um, not, not exactly here, but just start putting up signs that say no cash.
Yeah, I got a hard feeling that if you show up at the window and they've got your order ready, I got a feeling they're gonna take your cash.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, just something I wanted to look into as I start to see this.
I, I, I see the philosophy a little bit behind that, because cash businesses, people taking a lot of cash become victims sometimes of, of, of robberies and that type of thing, so I can see why some places might wanna limit, um, their cash, but to absolutely prohibit it would be a disservice to our residents.
Right.
Okay, alright. We'll s- we'll see, now we got, the next meeting is a workshop? JJ? Or city clerk?
August eighteenth? Think it's the homeless? Home, homeless and fireworks?
Great, August. Okay, cause I've been getting a lot of phone calls on. Okay, we stand adjourned.